All right, everyone. Welcome to this evening's meeting. Thank you all for coming. We are called to order. Please rise and salute the flag with us. Roll call, please, Angela.
Sabah Alzayed.
Here.
Amy Hi.
Here.
James Fee.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Ernie Hile.
Here.
Hile Shank.
Here.
Mr. President, I'd note for the record, we were in executive session from 7:00 to approximately 7:30 with regard to personnel issues.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bello. And moving on, Mr. Truman, take it away.
All right. Good evening, everybody. First up for council consideration, approval of the October 25th, 2022 meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hile, seconded by Ms. Hi, to approve the October 25th meeting minutes. Any additional questions or comments from council? Or the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, unanimous. Thank you.
All right, very good. Next up for council consideration, a motion to hire Matthew Stead to the position of full-time patrol officer, and the hire date would be effective December 7th, 2022. Before I turn it over to council for a vote, if Chief Beretta or Mayor Jack Seer had anything to say?
Well, we're glad to have Matt to be a full-time police officer here. We hope that you will vote for him. Matt is a 2009 graduate of the Perkium Valley High School. He played football, ran track. He graduated from Montgomery County Police Academy in 2012, in 2013. 2013, he was an Ocean City, Maryland seasonal police officer, first part of his career. He then went on to the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, where he's been there since 2014, a nine-year tenure. He's set himself apart as an NFTO, which is a field training officer, an IPIMBA certified bicycle officer, a member of the bomb squad, and most importantly, the vice president of the local 676 there for his police union. So he's set himself apart with all the things he's done. Tonight, his mom Shayna, his uncle Mark, who's a sergeant in Lower Providence, his uncle Adrian is a detective at Pottstown, his cousin Matt Stead, who's a police officer in Pottstown. Ryan, sorry. Ryan. We have his grandmother, Mary Ann, is here, and his husband Cory are all here, along with many, many friends. So all here for your vote.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
We have a motion from Ms. Alzayed, and it's seconded by Ms. Nolan to hire Officer Stead as a full-time patrol officer with the Borough of Bridgeport, effective December 7th. Additional questions or comments from council?
I just want to comment that this position is taking over the acclaimed career of Officer Pisa, and so in order to fill that position, we have to have an officer who is really going to be worthy of that position, someone who's going to represent the borough, be part of this community, someone that the community members will know and trust. And so I am very proud that Matthew Stead will be this officer. I think that everyone involved has done a good job hiring, and I appreciate that he applied to be part of us, and we're grateful that you'll be here.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Hile. Before we get to the vote, any additional questions or comments? Or from the public on that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There's done. That's unanimous. Thank you, and congratulations, officer.
And we will now have the oath ceremony for Matthew Stead.
Just repeat after me. I, Matthew Stead.
I, Matthew Stead.
Do solemnly swear.
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
Support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't be shy, everybody. Hey, and I think, at least in the time I've been here, that's the most impressive show of force at a hiring that we've had. So God bless. Well done.
Just need to, and these two spots.
Okay, right there? All right. We'll let you get back to your meeting now. Thank you, everybody.
We have a riveting budget presentation, everybody.
Could someone please close the door?
All right. Next up for council consideration, Resolution 2022-48, establishing the Borough Office holidays for 2023.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Mr. Fee, seconded by Ms. Alzayed, to establish the Borough Office holidays for next year. Questions or comments from the council? From the public? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Next up for council consideration, Resolution 2022-49, establishing the Borough Council meeting dates for 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Hile, seconded by Ms. Gundrum, to establish the council meeting dates next year. Questions or comments from council? Actually, I'll call out. We don't know. We're not scheduling a council meeting on an election day, are we? I know we sometimes do that, but I didn't check.
I double-checked.
You were on that, Megan? Okay. All right. Any other questions? From the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. That's unanimous.
All right. For council consideration, Resolution 2022-50, establishing the Finance Committee meeting dates for 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Hile, seconded by Ms. Gundrum, to establish the Finance Committee dates. Questions or comments from council? Or from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous as well.
All right. Next up, Resolution 2022-51, establishing the Small Business and Economic Development Committee meeting.
I'll make the motion.
2023.
Motion from Mr. Hile, seconded by Ms. Nolan, for the SBED Committee meeting dates for next year. Questions or comments from council? Or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Next up, Resolution 2022-52, establishing the Community Events Committee meeting dates for 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Hi, seconded by Ms. Gundrum, to establish the Community Events Committee meeting dates. Questions or comments from the council? Or from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
And finally, for council consideration, Resolution 2022-53, establishing the Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting dates for 2023.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Ms. Nolan, seconded by Mr. Fee, to establish the Sustainability Committee meeting dates for next year. Questions or comments from council? Or the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Next up for council consideration, a resolution of a different variety, Resolution 2022-54, approving the collective bargaining agreement between the Borough of Bridgeport and the Teamsters Local 384.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Alzayed, seconded by Mr. Hile. And before we vote, I just want to thank everybody who worked on this. I know it's a lengthy process, but it's important, and we take care of our folks that work here. So thanks to everybody, and thanks to the administration. Other questions or comments? Or from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Congratulations, Teamsters.
All right. Next up for council consideration, the promotion of David Oth to the classification of C2 Class A Skilled Laborer with License.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Hile, seconded by Ms. Alzayed, to promote David Oth to a Class A Skilled Laborer C2. Questions or comments from council?
I'd just say, I was here when we hired Dave, and I wish him the best of success, and grateful that he's contributing to our borough.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Hile. Other comments? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next up for council consideration, authorization to pay bills and salaries for the month of November 2022.
Make the motion. I'll second.
Motion from Ms. Gundrum, seconded by Ms. Hi, to go ahead and pay the people. Questions or comments from council? Or the public? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we can proceed, excuse me, to the presentation of Draft 1 of the 2023 budget, and also the final draft, as it were. Today's date is November 22nd, 2022, and let's dive right into what everybody's been waiting for. And I like to start off the presentation, excuse me, the presentation every year to illustrating a little bit of information on real estate millage and the Bridgeport taxpayers' tax dollar. The pie chart that you see in front of you demonstrates the millage breakdown of all of the varying taxing bodies that the Bridgeport taxpayer contributes to. You can see Bridgeport Borough is 12.23 mils, Upper Marion School District with over half of that allotment at 21.46 mils, and Montgomery County at 3.923 mils, and the Montgomery County Community College allocation of .39 mils, which has been on the books now for a handful of years as well. I would say that Upper Marion School District's real estate millage went up by seven tenths of a mil. From last year, it was 19.76, and Montgomery County increased their millage by .29 mils. I believe they were at .632 last year. Now they're at .923. However, Bridgeport holds steady at 12.23. And just at the bottom, you see there, the total millage is 38.003 mils for the Bridgeport taxpayer. So what does this mean? What are mills? So take a residential property, or any property for that matter, with an assessed value of $100,000. Multiply that $100,000 by .038003, and that is what millage is, 3.8% effectively, and change. So using that nice clean round number of an assessed value at $100,000, you have a tax bill that totals $3,803. Where does that money go? Well, Upper Marion School District gets $2,146. Bridgeport Borough gets $1,223. Montgomery County gets $392.30, and the Community College Fund gets $39. Further extrapolate that out, $1,223, which is Bridgeport's cut of the tax bill in this $100,000 hypothetical situation. Divide that by $3,803, that equals 32.2%. This means that, and what I try to demonstrate every year, or illustrate every year to the audience and to the residents, is that Bridgeport Borough only receives 32.2% of the resident's property tax dollar, and that's down from 33% last year. As long as Bridgeport Borough's millage rates remain stagnant, which is always our ultimate outcome or desire, or desired outcome, rather, and other taxing agencies' millage continues to increase, we will continue to be the recipient of a smaller and smaller percentage of the taxpayers' dollar. So going into every, this year and every year's budget, my managerial goals are, number one, first and foremost, no structural deficit in the general fund, which basically just means don't spend more than you make, which is a good fiscal tenet to live by, regardless of who you are. Number two, make sure there is no tax increase necessary in 2023, and I can state now that that will not be the case. We will not need a tax increase. This will be the 11th straight year of the borough not increasing property taxes. And number three, find a balance between project funding abilities and fiscal responsibility. And number four, continue improving borough infrastructure, amenities, services, and equipment, i.e. quality of life for our residents and property owners. All right, let's jump in. This coming year's general fund budget is projected to be, the revenues for the general fund budget are projected to be $5,361,500. This revenue projection of 5.361 million represents an increase of $129,500, or a 2.5% increase over top of the 2022 budgeted figure of $5.232 million. Where does this revenue come from? You might find yourself asking yourself, that did not come out right, but let's soldier onward nonetheless. This pie chart, this pie chart illustrates where the sources of revenues are coming from. The largest part, the orange portion there, obviously, is real estate taxes, which account for 42% of our overall revenues, or 2.255 million. In second place is earned income tax, at 23% of our revenue streams, at 1.25 million. Other revenues comprise 22% of our revenue stream, 1.15 million. And then you can see some smaller sections, licenses and permits, at $421,000, account for 8%. Fines, local services tax, real estate transfer tax are all in the 1% to 3%, a much smaller, but certainly important aspect or component of our revenue stream. And just to look at our revenue, our revenue line items on a line-by-line, or parent category by parent category basis, tax revenues are projected to be $3.717 million next year, and that is a $77,000 increase from last year's number of $3.64 million. And that's not coming from real estate tax. Real estate tax revenue is projected to remain steady at $2.25 million, because again, we're not, we're not planning a real estate tax increase. However, earned income taxes are projected to increase by $50,000 from last year, and this is really not indicative of any planned growth or anything of that nature. It's really just seeing revenues, EIT at least, revenue stabilize back to pre-COVID conditions. When COVID hit, we had actually reduced what we were anticipating in revenue, and bringing us back to 1.25 million puts us back on the same trajectory we had been pre-COVID. Moving forward with tax revenue, local services tax will nominally increase by $2,000 up to $62,000 we are projecting next year, and real estate transfer tax revenues are projected to increase from 125,000 to 150,000 next year. The main driver behind this is the final sale of the Riverfront Park property, along with other sales of new residential development. Moving on, licenses and permits are set to increase to $421,800 from last year. This represents an increase of $39,100 from last year's budget, and again, this increase is resulting from an anticipation of riverfront development commencing construction. And some of the other parent categories in the revenues department, fines, we are, we're looking at an increase in fines from $54,000 to $57,000, and I'll make the disclaimer that that's not because we are implementing new fines or increasing the current, the levels of fines. It's just increasing, increasing our overall budgetary numbers to be more in line with what the real-time numbers have been over the last three years, just following, following numeric trends to better align with those. And then other revenues, which is a kind of a larger parent category, which includes grants, non-permit fees, reimbursements for insurance claims, community event revenue, things of that nature. We're anticipating an increase of $10,200 up to $1,150,000 in that category. Moving over to the expenditure side, excuse me, because we are required legally to deliver a balanced budget, meaning revenues must equal expenses, our expenditure side is also matching our revenue side, $5.361 million. And where do those dollars go in 2023? Here's a pie chart that illustrates that. As is customary with most, most companies, particularly, particularly municipal government, salaries comprise the majority of that expense at $2.172 million, or 40.5% of the overall expense budget. Second up would be our insurance costs at just under 20% of our expenses, $1.06 million. Right behind that is our utility costs, $789,000 just about, or just about 15% of our budget. And then you can see some smaller administrative expenses, $396,950, about 7.5%. Debt service, $379,000, about 7.1%. And then some smaller miscellaneous general expenses, repairs, materials and supplies, vehicle operating, all comprise smaller slivers of our overall expenditure allocation. And to go through some of our larger, larger expenditure categories, for next year, salaries are projected at $2.172 million. This is an increase of $157,884 from last year's budgeted amount. Administrative expenses are set to be $396,950 next year. It's actually a slight decrease of just about $30,000 from last year. Utilities, and trash expense falls under utilities. This is obviously, you know, our water, electrical, gas, heating, oil obligations like that, as well as, as well as trash service. Utilities are projected to cost $788,815 next year. This is an increase of $281,195 from 2022, and it's directly resultant from an increase in our municipal trash collection contract. And just in case any of our viewing audience was not present at our, I believe, October 11th meeting, when we had opened and named the lowest responsible bidder for the contract, for the trash contract, which happened to be our only bidder, JP Mascaro, current year, 2022, we are spending $466,116. Next year, that will increase by 60%, 59.9% to $745,752. You see the next four subsequent years thereafter, increasing by anywhere from 4.8% to 5.1% to 9.7% to 6.8% year over year from there as well. So just to, this is the appropriate time to inform the public. It also is illustrated in the newsletters, which should be hitting, which should be hitting mailboxes. I believe today was the mail date, so they should be in mailboxes very soon, hopefully by the end of this week. This increase was also illustrated, but the residential trash and recycling collection fee will increase. fee will increase from $320 annually to $472 annually, beginning in January of 2023. As this is billed quarterly, this equates to increasing from $80 quarterly to $118 quarterly, so a $38 per quarter increase. Again, to touch back on a conversation or discussion we had last meeting, this is obviously a very large increase that, you know, nobody wants to, nobody wants to experience, Borough Council and administration certainly don't want to have to be the bearer of bad news and impart this to the Bridgeport taxpayer. However, looking on the bright side, you know, the fact that real estate taxes have not had to be raised for 11 years, and we have been able to spare the Bridgeport taxpayer any additional financial burden from a municipal standpoint over the last 11 years, should hopefully provide some counterbalance or some solace in comparison to this, this very large increase. Moving onward to insurance expenditures, up to $1.06 million, an increase of $140,000 from last year. Debt service, $379,217, which represents a decrease of $270,463 from last year. Pension expenses, at just a hair under $107,000. That's a small decrease, very small, about $6,200 from last year. And then some other, excuse me, larger expense parent categories. Miscellaneous admin is going up by $2,500. Materials and supplies, a slight increase of $3,000. Vehicle repairs, an increase of $8,000. General expenses, an increase of $1,000. Vehicle operating costs, which is gas and oil, an increase of $6,000. Miscellaneous general expenses, an increase of $1,500,000 up to $256,000 next year. And with that, are there any questions on the general fund budget for 2023? All right, seeing none, we can proceed to the sewer fund budget for next year. Mirror image, but on a smaller scale compared to the general fund, the projected revenue for the sewer fund next year is $1.415 million, which represents an increase of $63,860, or 4.7% from the general, from the budgeted revenue last year of just over $1.351 million. And the primary driver for this increase in revenue is an anticipated influx of sewer tap-in fees related to new construction. And again, because we're in Pennsylvania and we have to deliver a balanced budget, the expenditures match the revenues, so $1.415 million for the expense side. And here's a breakdown of where that money goes. Payroll at the largest, the largest portion, $419,000, or 30% of the sewer fund budget. Professional services comprises 29% of the budget. Utilities and supplies, at 25% of the budget. Bonds or debt service comprises 14% of the budget. And then a very small portion for our other, our other financial obligations. And to go through a few of the major parent categories in the sewer fund budget, salaries, $419,000, which is an increase of $28,480 from last year. Debt service, which is coming in at 201,160, that's a decrease of $33,660 from last year. Utilities and supplies, $356,190, an increase of $3,990 from last year. And professional services, $413,650, which is an increase of $65,050 from 2022. And again, are there any questions on the sewer fund portion of the budget?
I'm sorry, what's the main reason for the big jump in professional services?
In the sewer fund, Vice President Heil?
Yeah.
I believe that's going to be healthcare costs.
Fair enough.
Healthcare, healthcare costs account for about $51,000 of that $65.
Totally fair, it's just I don't think of it in that way in my head.
All right, well, seeing no further questions, I would ask council to consider a motion to advertise the 2023 budget.
I will make a motion to advertise the budget.
Second.
Mr. Heil made a motion to advertise. Ms. Nolan seconded it. Questions or comments from council on advertising the budget?
I just want to say, as a member of the, as a chair of the Finance Committee, I thank you to Keith and Angela and everyone that puts it together. I do want to just point out that a lot of other municipalities and counties, et cetera, with the wildness of the last few years of COVID and other things, it's been very hard to budget and do so effectively on any sort of local government level, especially when you need to balance a budget. So many other places are raising taxes or cutting back on services because it was very hard to make reasonable expectations. And it's not a criticism of anyone, it's just, it's a hard thing to do. So I appreciate the very challenging job you've had to manage us through the past three years, really, to get us to this point. I know that the residents will have to pay higher taxes in one way or another from other things, and if we can keep our costs low for them, that's a big win. So I just want you to know that we appreciate, and hopefully the residents, if they see that, would appreciate as well, because it's not an easy thing to do to keep those, that budget balanced with everything else going on in this country.
Thank you, Mr. Heil. Other questions or comments on advertising the budget? All right, or from the public? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes, thank you.
All right, thank you. And with that, we can proceed to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business that any members here at the dais wish to discuss this evening? All right, we could then proceed to committee reports. Are there any committee reports to share? Very good, we can move to the mayor's report. Mayor Jack Seer.
Thank you. Since our last council meeting, I got to take a tour of the new high school. Were any of the council members able to go to the ribbon cutting? Yeah, it was pretty cool, right? I know I was really blown away by it. I know that our borough's kids are going to get an amazing, amazing education at this school, and I'm really excited to see those results. I was also honored to attend the annual Veterans Day ceremony at the Bridgeport War Memorial on November 11th. It was a really moving event, and I again want to take a moment to thank all of our residents and beyond who have served our country. Actually, just this morning, I visited Bridgeport Elementary and got to experience the first lockdown of the year, was the first one, right? Students and staff both did a truly remarkable job, and it really reassured me knowing that our children are safe in the case of a lockdown situation. And afterwards, I, along with members of the Bridgeport Police Department, got to participate in the school district's Thanksgiving dinner distribution. It's always a really heartwarming event, seeing how much our community members are able to donate to their neighbors to ensure that everyone has a great start to their holiday season. So, thank you chief for your team's help in that. And on the same track, please remember that our community is also holding a food drive through the end of the month to further support our neighbors. You can make any donations of unexpired and non-perishable goods, along with any personal hygiene products, directly into the Little Free Pantry, which is located in front of Borough Hall, you can do that at any time. You can also donate inside Borough Hall during regular business hours, at Frosty Falls, and at Reach Indoor Climbing and Fitness. And if you wish to make a monetary donation, they are welcomed, and the secure link to do so can be found on Growing Bridgeport Together's Facebook page. Finally, I'll be hosting my monthly office hours this Saturday, November 26th, from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. in my office on the first floor of Borough Hall. I know people might still be digesting their Thanksgiving meals and spending time with family, but it's already a pretty Bridgeport-y day, so I figured with the Festive Lights event and the Holiday Shopping Village taking place, figured why not add to the fun? So please make sure to stop by if you'd like to discuss anything, and before coming back to Borough Hall for the evening festivities, please make sure to shop around our community to support our local businesses for Small Business Saturday. So that is all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you Mayor Jack Seer. Moving on to the chief's report, Chief Beretta.
Good evening, everyone. Just, sometimes people have questions about what, either crime trends or what's going on that, for police reporting, and we would refer them back to the site, our, the borough sites for our police blockers, where you can get an idea of a type of event, a unit block location, and a date. A couple of things, we had a DUI hit-and-run accident and an arrest. We had a warrant arrest that included recovery of a firearm from West Front Street, so two notable arrests. Good job for some of our police officers working the night work, so excellent jobs. We see that Officer Matt Stead will be working and starting on the 7th of December, so that's good. Matt brings a lot of quality to the police department. He's a smart young man, and he's, he's kind of dove in with a couple of our different committees, so look forward to seeing him working out there. And one of, one of you gentlemen spoke of John Pisa. John Pisa is not somebody you can replace. He's got an institutional history here. It's always the most difficult thing with the police department, it's about the people, it's not about the equipment. And he's one of those persons. He's just got that massive institutional history that, so I'm hopeful that some of, enough our police officers were imprinted by, by John's expertise, his gentlemanly conduct with, with people, his intimate knowledge of the town and its peoples for multiple generations. So we can hire other people, and no offense to anyone that we, we do hire, certainly, but John is not just replaced. So, because this is going to be this, this meeting before John will come off the street very shortly, so I can't say much of good things about John Pisa. We, we'll be putting stuff up for Toys for Tots in the lobby and in the reception area of the police department shortly. I'll get back to you about that, and also with our Bridgeport Christmas program for the, for the children of Bridgeport, that's coming. The musical Talking Santa Claus will be back next week in the lobby of the police department, so we'll encourage everybody to come by with their kids and, and get some pictures. You will also notice that the police officers are starting to look like Santa Claus, be included, so with the No Shave November and all of the proceeds from that for any participating officers, will go to the Upper Marine Community cupboard. So that should be a good thing.
That's all I have for you tonight. All right.
Before we move on, Mr. Truman, are we, will we be doing anything to recognize Officer Pisa on his retirement? We have him on the books until February?
Correct. So maybe early next year, once we do it, we'll try to convince Officer Pisa for the last ride. I know that it's a very different thing to see it and go underneath the flag and seeing your peers, but convince him to participate in that and have a little shindig, as well as a presentation before Borough Council.
That'd be great, thanks.
All right, thank you chief. Moving on to new business, are there any items of new business to discuss this evening? All right, seeing none, we can move to open forum and announcements. Are there any announcements this evening? And I would just remind everybody at home that you should be receiving your, if you haven't already, your notify postcard in the mail. Notify is a new system that we implemented here. An emergency notification system, or a reverse 911 system, however you want to coin it. You have a four-digit account number on your, on your postcard. Go to the Borough website, follow the link that takes you to the place which you need to go to register. It's very easy, you're, you're, you're up and done within five minutes' time. And if you encounter any problems with any bugs when you're trying to, when you're trying to log in and register, please contact Borough Hall, email myself, and we're more than happy to help you out with that. But a very vital and integral piece of information, or a program that we're rolling out, to try to more quickly and more readily be able to get information out, vital information on emergencies, bad weather, you know, major catastrophes of that nature. We certainly want to apprise our citizens as quickly as possible when those things arise. So when you see the postcard, don't just chuck it, pay it some mind, register, and we'll all be better off for it. So thank you. Any other announcements?
I'd like to remind everyone again, Mayor Beth Jack Seer, already mentioned this, but this Saturday coming is the annual Holiday Shopping Village from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the Borough Lot next door. Part of that, we will have our kids' activity tent. In that tent, we will have ornaments that are make and take. You can either take them home, or if you'd like to, you could donate them to be placed on the Borough tree. Along with that is also the Festive Lights annual event, and that begins 5:30 and will run to approximately the 7:00 p.m. So we'd like to see you all there.
All right, thank you Councilmember Gundrum. Any other announcements? All right, seeing none, council could certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before, I just want to make a mention that we had, at our home personally, we had a sewage issue, and afterwards there was just confusing smell and temperature, so we called the borough to get someone to come over and quickly, because it's a small borough, people were able to come out from, Mike Gallagher Jr. and Mike Kinsey were able to come out. I just want to point out that with the holiday season, with cooking and decorations and everything, it's very easy to call the borough if you sense that some, there could be any sort of fire situation, safety situation with the police, because there was police on our street recently. We are in a fortunate position where we have great fire and police are within one mile of everyone's house. And please take advantage of that instead of feeling you're going to be a burden, because they came out right away. Everything was fine, there was no emergency, actually, but I think a lot of people will let things linger when there are people here who are here to help, and they will do it very quickly. So I appreciate, I just want to put on the record, I appreciate the work of the Fire Department and Police Department, just what I've seen in my own life recently, and hope everyone makes use of them, and thank you and have a good Thanksgiving. Now, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All right, everyone, it is 8:19, we're adjourned.